Good afternoon. I call the meeting, whoops, I should remind, there we go. Good afternoon, I call the meeting of the Governance Committee to order. It's Monday, December 8th, it's 2:30 ish. Wendy, will you please call the roll?
Clark, here. Dumphy?
Here.
Portoguine?
Here.
Kaya Malane?
Here.
And Ryan?
Here. And Craig, will you please read the Statement of Conduct?
Good afternoon. Welcome to this meeting of the Governance Committee. To testify before this committee in person or virtually, you must sign up in advance on the committee agenda at www portland.gov/council/agenda/governance-committee or by calling 311. Information on engaging with the committee can be found at this link. Registration for virtual testimony closes one hour prior to the meeting. In-person testifiers must sign up before the agenda item is heard. If public testimony will be taken on an item, individuals may testify for three minutes unless the chair states otherwise. Your microphone will be muted when your time is over. The chair preserves order. Disruptive conduct such as shouting, refusing to conclude your testimony when your time is up, or interrupting others' testimony or committee deliberations will not be allowed. If you cause a disruption, a warning will be given. Further disruption will result in ejection from the meeting. Anyone who fails to leave once ejected is subject to arrest for trespass. Additionally, the committee may take a short recess and reconvene virtually. Your testimony should address the matter being considered. When testifying, state your name for the record. If you are a lobbyist, identify the organization you represent. Virtual testifiers should unmute themselves when the clerk calls your name. Thank you.
Thank you, Craig. In today's meeting, the Governance Committee will approve the minutes from the October 6th and October 20th committee meetings, hear general public testimony on governance issues, consider the appointment of a member to the Portland Election Commission, consider resolution on annual strategic priority setting for the council, consider an ordinance adding code related to appointed boards, commissions, and committees. Now we'll move on to chair and vice chair announcements. I am going to preside over the meeting today because our leader is virtual today, and I will ask if she'd like to weigh in at the end here. We will have a full agenda with committee appointments and two long-developed policy decisions. The goal of today is to get the items passed from this committee to the full council so that our elected body can deliberate together and make meaningful progress on streamlining how the city runs our advisory board processes and establishing an annual strategic planning effort for the city council and for the entire city, for that matter. Both the code change and resolution before us today will make really big strides in improving how government functions, transparency, and engagement with our community. So for those who are speaking today, invited testimony, my fellow counselors and the public, I ask that you keep your comments focused and concise so that we can keep this moving on time. Chair, Kaya Malane, there you are. Would you like to add anything? It's really good to see you.
Great to see you. Thank you, Vice Chair Ryan, for presiding. Really appreciate it. And I don't have anything else to add. I'm looking forward to a great meeting today.
Thank you so much, and I really appreciate you calling in. Okay, will you please read the first item? Wendy?
Item 1, October 6 through 20, 2025 Governance Committee Minutes.
Why do I have something different? You're doing the minutes, right? Okay, is that what you just said?
Yes.
Oh, sorry, I was looking at something else. Okay, so basically, I'm just doing the head nodding thing. You guys all nodding like that. Tiffany, give us the nod. There you go. Okay, moving on. Will you please read the next item?
Item 2, 2025-469 Public Testimony on Governance Issues. We have one person signed up.
Great. Welcome. A surprise testimony. It's good to see you.
Yes.
And you know the drill, you have three minutes.
Great, thank you. Just a couple of quick things. As I spoke to you last time, I talked--
For the record, say your name.
I'm sorry, Terry Harris, for the record. Last time, I spoke a little bit about the city administrator recruitment. This time, we'll talk a little bit about the city administrator confirmations coming up, in that I think it could have been so much better. And I don't have problems with the candidate, in that I don't really know that much about the candidate. I do have problems with the process. Like I said last time, we needed, there's an important community involvement component that should have taken place. As far as I know, it didn't. As of this morning, nobody has signed up to give testimony in the city administrator confirmation hearing, which I think is a sign, but I don't know what it means. And it's either there's no support, or nobody knows enough to support. The fact that not a single citizen has signed up for that is a signal that something went wrong. Anyway, the community engagement component that is listed for that item on the agenda is all one-year-old. It's the old stuff from GTAC, and it's the old stuff from the prior recruitment. I think the mayor on Wednesday needs to be held accountable for this. And unfortunately, it then lands on the council to be accountable for it, because you are forced to make a decision based on very little. Anyway, that's number one. Number two is accountability and oversight is going to land on the council very soon, and there's not a lot of infrastructure that you have to deal with it. I would just hope that you could avoid nuclear options of oversight while maintaining some serious oversight. And otherwise, accountability, investigation, and oversight is going to be politicized due to process problems, and you're not going to get to the root causes. So I'd urge you to try to not go nuclear while also staying substantive in the oversight, because I think in several things on your agenda, you're going to see that soon. So anyway, that's what I have today. Thank you. I'll be back later.
No, thank you. And last meeting, you did testify on one of our topics today for strategic priorities, so thank you for reminding us of that. Okay, no one else has signed up?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you, Wendy. Okay, then go ahead and please read item 3.
Item 3, 2025-470 Confirm Appointment of Member to Portland Elections Commission for a Term to End, April 30, 2029.
Well, today, we will be considering the nomination of a new member to the Portland Elections Commission. The commission is a nine-member volunteer commission, which implements the Small Donor Elections Program. According to the Charter, Chapter 3, Article 4, the Portland Elections Commission first recommends people for appointment, the mayor appoints, and the council confirms. At their October 22 meeting, Ms. Lee was unanimously recommended by the Portland Elections Commission. Ms. Jenny Lee has been recommended by the commission, the mayor has appointment authority, and council now has confirmation authority. This vote is to move the nomination of Ms. Lee forward to the full council. I welcome-- is Susan here? No. She's online. Hello, Susan Motet, and you're the Director of the Small Donors Elections Program, and you and your staff will give us some more information. Welcome to the dais, and hello, Jenny Lee, as well as joining us in person. We appreciate that you're here in person.
The Portland Elections Commission Chair, Amy Sample Ward, is here to introduce everything.
Thanks, Susan.
Thanks, everyone. Hi, everyone. I'm Amy Sample Ward. I'm Chair of the Portland Elections Commission, and I really appreciate Commissioner Ryan already summarizing some of the points for everyone's information before you, as stated, is the report for an appointment of a new PEC member, Jenny Lee. As Commissioner Ryan already shared, the commission was created in code in 2019, voters enshrined it in charter as an independent body in 2024, nine-member body, four-year terms. It implements the Small Donor Elections Program and is permitted to implement other related policies delegated to it. Part of our work is to evaluate the performance of the Small Donor Elections Program and recommend to the director and council how to operate and improve the program. The charter also requires the PEC to provide the mayor and council annual notice of the amount of funding that the Small Donor Elections Program needs to be solvent through each election, and you will be receiving that next month. Stay tuned. The appointment process, as Commissioner Ryan already shared, is that we, as the PEC, recommend appointees, the mayor appoints and council confirms. Our primary goal in that process is to ensure that the commission collectively reflects the diversity of Portland. In selecting applicants to recommend, the PEC looks at which members still have time left on their terms, identifies needed areas of expertise and lived experience, so that, again, we can meet that goal of reflecting the diversity of Portland. Jenny's expertise and democratic engagement of communities that have been historically and systematically excluded or marginalized from democratic participation is unparalleled and really deeply valuable to the mission of the Small Donor Elections Program. We really want to ensure that all voices are heard in Portland's democracy, and bringing in expertise of how to do that is key. The commission voted unanimously to recommend the appointment of Jenny to the PEC and are now requesting that the Governance Committee move this into the full council for confirmation. I'm happy to answer other questions, but also, I know that Jenny is here and can share herself.
All right. Thank you so much, Amy, and for the kind words. So, good afternoon, Vice Chair Ryan, members of the Governance Committee, as well Chair Kaya Malane, virtually. My name is Jenny Lee, and I'm honored to be here today and under consideration for confirmation to the Portland Elections Commission. Thank you for the opportunity to be here and share just a little bit about myself and my interest in serving. Also, for the record, I know sometimes when it's invited, it's a little different, but I did want to just state, as with testimony, that I am a registered lobbyist with the city of Portland on behalf of the Coalition of Communities of Color. So, my commitment to building a healthy democracy through policy as well as implementation has spanned over the last eight years. It's encompassed voting systems and equitable representation, civic engagement and outreach, campaign finance regulations, as well as Portland's Small Donor Elections Program. I'm very excited to potentially serve on the PEC because it is an independent commission that provides meaningful substantive guidance and oversight to the program. It's an opportunity to review and analyze extensive data and research each election cycle to improve the program every year. The work of the staff and commission is incredible and has resulted in a stronger program that builds on successes, improves areas we're still learning, even as the electoral system has changed dramatically. And it's that ability to incorporate findings and the continuous improvement collective effort of this commission that I very much hope to contribute to. And as you know all too well, Portland is facing truly unprecedented challenges, but I think we should be incredibly proud of our years of work building a robust democracy, and that is a foundation to weather these very challenging times and really rise to the occasion. As you know, as counselors, Portlanders having faith in our local government and democracy is essential, and I see the Small Donor Program as a critical part of that, and I hope to continue to this work going forward. So, thank you to the members of the commission for their recommendation, and to the mayor, commission staff for all of your dedicated work, and thank you all for your service and consideration of this appointment.
Thank you so much, Jenny. Are there any questions for my colleagues? Counselor Clark?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Hi, welcome, and thank you so much for being willing to serve in this capacity. Your credentials are impeccable, and I'm very impressed. But I do have a question generally, not necessarily for you, but how we feel about having someone who's a registered lobbyist at the city to be serving in this capacity. Does anybody have any thoughts about that? I just, it's just a little question about that.
I'm looking for an attorney. There was no one stopping this meeting today?
I don't generally have attorneys in the room for committees, but there should be somebody on call, so we should have somebody we can get here pretty quickly. Do you want me to try to do that for us?
Well, it's a fair question, and I think it merits a legal response. And thanks. I must be in a lot of committee meetings where they're told to be here.
I just looked to my staff who are in the back of the room, and they're going to go grab somebody for us.
Jamie, have your hand up on this issue.
Yeah, a little bit. Well, I will say that I don't certainly, I don't particularly have concerns about that, simply because Portland's lobbying registry requirement is sort of a register first and assume that you are a lobbyist. Yeah, I mean, I was a registered lobbyist in my volunteer capacity with the organization Music Portland. Generally, our city's lobbying rules are not the most robust. It's more about just identify yourself upfront, and, you know, if this is in your job description, know that you're going to have to fill out a report. So I certainly don't. I also know Jenny from a thousand different hats that she wears, and she is one of the more community-involved members of Portland that I've met. And even if she were, well, she also happens to be a registered lobbyist for an amazing community partner as well. It's not like she's, you know, Western States Petroleum Institute or Walmart. So I don't personally have a problem with that. I don't think that there should be a challenge with that from a boards and commissions perspective. She's not serving as a representative of the organization that she is employed by. So I don't personally have any concerns about this, and I think that Jenny's going to be an amazing addition to this committee. And I'm excited for her volunteerism, so.
Thank you, Counselor Dumphy. Counselor Prokine?
Thank you for asking the question, Counselor. And Jenny, I want to thank you for stating upfront that you're a registered lobbyist. I don't have a concern with somebody being a registered lobbyist, but I do think that it requires us to, and being appointed somewhere, but I do think that it requires us to ask different questions and to consider what group that person lobbies for and what that group's interest is in the work that they might be doing as a board appointee. In this case, I actually think that the work that Ms. Lee has done, talk about you while you're sitting here, but I think that the work that you've done actually lends itself to an important voice on this body. To have somebody on the Elections Commission who has an understanding of how to reach Portlanders and ensure that they're engaged in government, I think is actually important, because we need somebody there who's thinking about how candidates reach Portlanders and engage them in elections. And so having that nexus and having somebody who knows how to do that intimately, because they've done it in getting Portlanders engaged in the work that we do at City Hall, I think could be really helpful. But I do think that it's important for us to ask the question, and, like I said, I appreciate you providing that information to start with, because there could be times where somebody was a registered lobbyist and their interests, I think, as a lobbyist conflicted with the board or had a vested interest that might be inappropriate in the board we were appointing them to, where it could be a problem. So I would say not a categorical no from me, but let's ask more questions. And Counselor, Vice Chair, I'll note that I got a message from Haley Blondie that we do have some folks in the room who can speak to that overlap, that Ocean and Amanda are able to do that if we need. We're also working on the attorney, if you want the legal opinion, though.
Thank you.
Point of information from the commission's rules. We do already have multiple members of the PEC who are registered lobbyists with the city of Portland, and the advisory board application does ask for conflict of interest, and Jenny has none. So I just wanted to offer that as part of this conversation.
Okay. Are you good with this? Okay. I have a couple of questions. It's good to see you, first of all. Thank you for all the work that you do in our city. Your Statement of Interest, Jenny, you said, "Serving on the advisory board will be dynamic and meaningful experience with significant opportunity to advance equity in our elections and government." Can you share more about what this means in practice?
So, for equity, meaning that in a broad sense, but particularly given my role, again, a focus on those who have been most excluded historically, we've done, including in my professional capacity, extensive voter education and outreach, but the ability to bring folks into the process as donors and expressing their perspectives, having candidates to connect with them, and really bringing a broader base and folks exercising their power as a Portland voter, is, I think, the area that I'm particularly interested in, that encompasses all demographics, and this is something that I think helps elevate perspectives in a way that's unique for many other kinds of democracy-building activities. So I hope to support refining the program, making sure it's adaptive, especially as we move into the next election cycle with this new system of government. And so that's looking to demographics, geography, how many folks, amounts that folks are contributing, that I'm looking forward to helping support with that analysis and then understand what recommendations, adaptations we might want to make.
Okay, thank you. I see that we have the city attorney in the office. Do you think there's a need for, I think we resolved this, but maybe not. The question on the table is any rules, if you will, about someone being a registered lobbyist and being on a commission? And we decided that there's a number of people that fall into that category, and it's about transparency. That's a summary, not an opinion. Go.
Thank you for the record, Robert Taylor, City Attorney. That's a great summary. I think that's correct. There's no prohibition on a lobbyist serving on a board like this.
Awesome. This could be one of your briefer moments. This could be one of your briefer moments at the dais.
Thank you.
That's a good day at the office, right? Okay, back to you, Jenny. Your bio shows your deep background in election advocacy and lobbying. How would you maintain neutrality? I think the plus that the council president mentioned is also, it's a, there's a fine line where, in my opinion, you'd have to really work on neutrality in such a commission. So what are some of your ways that you will bring that independent, you used that word earlier, neutrality to your role?
I think ultimately, it's because I, or one of the ways is that because the system is so important and that this is really about program and a structure. It's not about any one candidate or perspective, but that it's a faith in the success. And so I have, I feel like, learned that even more over the past couple of years in other areas of government reform that I've been able to support in, that that is really the guiding star of, I think, what this commission does. And there is a very robust membership of the existing commission. I think anything that I, you know, any perspectives that I shared, there is the opportunity for folks to respond, to have a meaningful conversation about it, and I have no doubt if it ever did creep into anything that the other members of the commission would engage meaningfully on that. So I take the, I take that service very seriously, but also, I think, over time, this is a long game. It's about real systems change and that upholding that, making sure it's successful and unassailable is really of the utmost importance to me.
Thank you. Any other questions? Okay, if not, I would like to entertain a motion to have the report document number 2025-470 be sent to the full council with the recommendation to be accepted.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, that was moved by Counselor Dumphy and seconded by Counselor Pertukini. Counselor, so we have both, the motion has been moved and seconded. Are there any more discussion, any more discussion on this? Looking on the virtual screen, okay, we're good. Okay, Clark, please call the roll.
Clark?
Aye.
Dumphy?
Aye.
Pertukini?
Aye.
Kaya Malane?
Thank you for your service. Aye.
Ryan?
Thank you. Aye.
The motion is approved with five ayes and no zero, and zero no votes.
Again, thank you for being here in person, and can you please read the next item?
Item 4, 2025-441, adopt procedures for annual council strategic priority setting. Resolution.
Thank you, Wendy. Today, we have a sec, we will have a second discussion about a resolution that directs city council to convene annually, each January, to deliver a strategic priority plan for the upcoming year. I have listened to you on this committee and other councilors and have incorporated changes to the original resolution. Those were sent out on Friday, and we will discuss these in more depth today. The plan will help to align the work of the council and communicate with transparency to the public about what their elected officials will be focused on. We haven't had many opportunities to inform the public about our shared priority agenda. Looking back, the one real opportunity we have was through the budget process, but that really wasn't focused on council shared strategic priorities. It was more of a reactionary process due to the urgency of time and more individualized with each council office. And this could help us add a layer of shared goals we could all work from as well. We can all recognize how the annual priorities setting will add value by informing the budget development process for the mayor and the city administrator, both of whom should be partners in council's process. We can have a more focused approach to budgeting each year alongside the mayor's team, letting them also understand the council's priorities and opportunities for shared vision. This is why we should do this annual exercise well before the mayor announces their priority, their budget in late winter, early spring. As a quick recap, we discussed the annual council strategic priority resolution at the November 10th Governance Committee meeting. And because there was a lot of feedback, I agreed to pull this back to my office, rework it, and bring it back at today's meeting. I really appreciated the input from my colleagues, and I've incorporated many of those changes that were suggested in November, including removing the required number of hours of the meeting time and specific percentage to adopt the annual set of priorities. A change suggested, but that is not included, is my revised resolution is language that the priority setting work could be done in December and January. I remain strongly on the mindset that the work should be done in January, following the voting of the new council president and vice president, as well as after some possible onboarding of new councilors post-election in those every-other-year cycles. I think we all understand how it would be difficult to both conduct strategic priority work and elect the council president and vice president concurrently. With those thoughts, I open this up for additional thoughts and feedback, and I look forward to moving forward with a common best practice of doing an annual priority and goal-setting process at the beginning of each calendar year. With that, I turn it over to the floor for more conversations. And I think, oh, wait, maybe we should do this. Counselor Canal is, there you are. Counselor Canal has been, has some friendly amendments that I think they want to bring forward. So why don't you come to the dais and read those out? And have you emailed those to everyone prior?
Yes, and they're filed at the page that has this draft. Thank you, Counselor Ryan, for the record. My name is Samir Canal. I'm a city councillor from District 2. Today, I want to thank Counselor Ryan for bringing forward this resolution, adopt procedure for annual council strategic priority setting. I'm broadly supportive of it, and I've supported your call to do this process since August, and that was four months ago, when you first raised it during the conversation around committee changes. It's actually unfortunate, in my view, that this requires a resolution at all, but hopefully this will, if approved, be implemented by council leadership. This policy has a lot of strengths. I think it's made better by the proposal made by Counselor Ryan to amend it, so I'm speaking, assuming that the other friendly amendment from your office, Counselor Ryan, has passed. I think it creates whereas clauses that very strongly articulate the problem statement. I think it's clear that the public has an expectation created under the previous former government that strategic planning would happen for the city and led by the council. And I also think that this creates generally a clear path forward of how to implement such a process. Personally, I've experienced being a part of city strategic planning before. I helped with the structure for that for public safety in my previous role as inclusive policy manager for the Public Safety Service Area, and I think these are really strong. There are also a couple of areas where I think this policy could be improved. I first want to note, we have no immediate path outlined in the resolution for how the strategic plan will ultimately be used. I think this could be addressed here, but is ultimately the responsibility of the council, ideally council leadership, but not just those two individuals, to refer back to this document as needed. I'm personally content with it the way it is in this document in this section because I know at least Counselor Ryan and I will be here to ensure that we refer back to whatever the outcomes of these are. To the things that I want to address in the amendment, I have some concern about the administration facilitating our strategic planning process. I think this is something we can resolve by having council operations team or another mutually-supported facilitator with no tie to the executive branch be our facilitator. This is also tied to the point Counselor Ryan just made, that the budget process, which is the closest thing we've had so far, was shaped by the executive branch, and we were in that reaction kind of space. The mayor and administrator should be key subject matter experts that we consult and be in attendance, but not as a facilitator. Secondly, I think there's a lack of clarity that could be polished a little bit with how emergent issues are identified, requiring a committee to meet or for those conversations to occur at the full council during the period of time that we're doing strategic planning. And I'm concerned that absent a little more clarity, it will be the decision of just one councillor. And as someone who's asked for the Public Safety Committee, and I want to stress, the Public Safety Committee, to meet often enough to address significant issues and been rebuffed many times on that request, I want to be sure that it is committee leadership who are best suited to know what's going on in that topical area, who can identify that an issue is in fact emergent. And third, ensuring that the timing is workable. Our council president election will be on January 7th, which means we'll likely start scheduling meetings for January 14th, and that's to ensure that the president and vice president cannot merely be elected but be organized for this process, too. In order to get something on the council agenda by January 31st, that would require filing by January 23rd under our current calendar, which means about nine days to do this process, the way it's written. I don't think that's the intention here, so I'm hoping to create clarity that the council can continue actually doing the planning through January 31st, at least. And that brings me to my amendment, which has three things. First, replaces city administrator as the default facilitator with council operations and opening the door to identifying a mutually-supported facilitator instead. Second, to clearly define who identifies emergent issues, requiring either consideration by a committee or the full council as the committee's leadership. And third, to ensure that the strategic plan is not merely filed by the council leadership, but actually placed on a council agenda and giving that timeline until February 28th so that the planning process itself isn't squeezed to as few as nine days and that the outcomes actually get voted on instead of being stuck waiting to be placed on a full council agenda. And you can see the full text of it as Canal 1 on the page for it. Again, thank you to Counselor Ryan for keeping this conversation going over several months, and I look forward to hopefully helping make it an even stronger document go into the full council.
Thank you, Counselor Canal. And if you could stay at the dais, I trust there could be some questions that you would be a part of the Q and A on. Counselor Call, or Counselor Clark, that's a new hand?
Yeah.
Okay, you're up.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First, I just want to say thanks for reworking this. First of all, thanks for bringing it forward, and secondly, thanks for reworking it.
Sure.
I think it's much better, and I'm very supportive of it. I don't really have any questions, but I just was reading the Canal amendment
Yes.
for the first time today, and I'm not sure that, well, I like the extension of the timeframe and the wording is fine. The first proposal here to take this out of the hands of the city administrator, I'm not sure I agree with that. I, I would like the city administrator to take the lead for now on this, and we're sort of, it's a whole new world, and I don't, because we're 12 different individuals with different perspectives, I'm not sure I want us to be working on the facilitator this time. I'd rather see the city administrator with that responsibility or his or her designee. So with respect to Counselor Canal, I'm not sure I agree with you on that one, but I'm fine on the second one. That's all I have. Thank you.
That was very helpful. Counselor Pertukini?
Thank you, Counselor Ryan, and I'll echo Counselor Clark's gratitude, both for your bringing this forward, but also for your pulling it back and making some of those changes. I think what we have before us is something that moves in the direction of the need for strategic planning work in a way that can be workable and allow us to ensure we don't lose a month of the work of the city, which I can assure you is already piling up for January. I am looking through my notes to just see where I want to start here. I apologize. In the way that you have this laid out now, is the strategic planning session an official council meeting or is it a work session? How are we operating it? And what I'm trying to think about is this question about who facilitates it and how that works with what type of meeting it is that we're having.
Well, I thank you for that question, Counselor. I think it should be a work session.
Okay.
And then, like we do with all, I think, our best work, and we do it collectively as the entire council, is workshop it in the work session and then bring the final resolution to the council.
Okay.
This should be an interactive meeting, not bound by some of the formalities that we experience when we're in a formal meeting. And I don't think it should come from one committee. I think it's all-inclusive.
That makes a lot of sense to me, and that helps me think about this.
I was assuming that so much. I didn't really spell it out, so.
It's on the record now. We've said it.
It is, yeah.
I don't mind the original language about the city administrator overseeing it. I think that we need to be, I think that we need to do a better job at drawing the distinction between the administration and the executive. They are not the same. The administration is supposed to be neutral and sit between the executive and the legislative branches of our government. And as long as we can do a better job, I'll say, moving forward at creating that separation there, I'm comfortable with the administrator overseeing it. I'm wondering, though, Counselor Canal, and I'm sorry, I have a few questions. I'll go back and forth if that's okay. But I'm wondering, Counselor Canal, if you have talked to council operations about whether they feel like they are set up to do that work or whether your intent in your language is truly for council operations to find a facilitator with councilors to do the work and that it wouldn't be facilitated by council operations?
Thanks for the question. It's closer to the second option than the first. It's not exactly that. My intention was that we would look for a mutually-supported facilitator and that the default option, should we not be able to find one in the timeframe, would be council operations, which is, you know, part of our team, as opposed to someone on the other side of the aisle of the division of labor and separation of powers in the government.
Okay, thank you. That's helpful. I'll just share, colleagues, that I could be okay with either of these. I don't feel a need to make a change if I hear from the rest of you up here that you're really interested in it coming through council operations. I'm certainly not opposed to that either. I'm curious to hear other people's thoughts on that piece. Counselor Ryan, I really appreciate the change from shall to may suspend committees. I am already hearing committee chairs scheduling out into January. I'm already hearing from the administration about things that they need us to move in January, and I think that if our intent is for January to not be a time when committee chairs take on big-picture policy, where do we want to go from here discussions, but we kind of pause those types of conversations, but still allow committees to meet in order to do second, or I guess it's not second readings in committees, but to pass things that they've already had extensive discussions on or to move things forward that we need to, to keep the work of the city running, things like that, that we might have committees with lighter schedules in January but not cancel them completely, that that makes a lot of sense to me. I just want to state on the record that my hope is, whether it is your language or Counselor Canal's language, that we move forward today around committees continuing to meet, that we do so in a way where, I would hope at least, that the intent is, we're not doing the big policy work in committees. We are continuing to move forward the work that we've started or the general operations of the city so that we don't get behind on those things. We had an experience this last year where we got behind, and it was a real struggle to catch back up for a lot of our committees, and I don't want us to end up in that place again. I think we can do that under either of the proposals brought forward for language. I hope that's our intent. And then I also just wanted to ask a question about the timing, because I would hate for this to be a process that puts our regular work on hold for two months. I also very much understand, Counselor Canal, your concern about not having it passed in time for the end of January, and I'm wondering, Counselor Ryan, what your thought was when you said January 31st? You said bring forward by January 31st. Was your thought that it would be passed by January 31st or that you were saying, bring forward this proposal by January 31st? We're doing the work this month, and then council will debate the work presumably the next month? What was the original intent there so that I can try to think about
Yeah.
what it is that we're trying to accomplish and how we make sure this works?
Let me take the multiple questions that you asked. I think that it's important to note that there's a word "may" in here, and so there is complete authority and agency for each current committee chair to move work during the time that we're also doing this. That was made clear. That's why there's a word "may." So I don't think that's an issue. I also want to remind everybody, I do think this is our regular work. So when it's characterized as not regular work, I think that's what we're trying to do with our culture, is to say at the beginning of each calendar year, this is part of our regular work.
You're right. And I'm sorry. I'm sorry for implying that.
No, it's okay.
I should have said ongoing work. There's the ongoing carryover work.
You know, when you're in this seat, you're in it quite often. You want to make sure there's clarity and dialogue. And so I think those were the two questions. I'm actually indifferent. Was I signaling that I think it should be a priority at the beginning of the calendar year, and it would be really good for the City of Portland if we did focus as much as possible at the very beginning of the year to get clarity and to get it to the council as quickly as possible? Yes, I think that would signal some high functioning of the city council working together for the city's purposes.
Thank you. Can I ask?
But I'm also a realist, and if it goes past January 31st, I don't want this to bind us, and so I'm us, and so I'm open to that friendly amendment.
Okay. I think I may prefer your language about bringing it forward by then, because I think that actually pushes us a little faster.
That's where my brain was coming from. I felt like the signaling that, and if it was, if this was not a resolution, I would have been thinking about it differently. But resolutions are aspirational, and so the aspiration is for us to focus in the month of January.
Can I ask one other question about intent?
Of course.
You have in your resolve, the council president or vice president will bring something forward, and may present a new policy committee structure. And I'm just wondering, by saying that it could be either of those leaders, either of those leaders, I suspect we will have times, looking into the future, where we have a vice president and president who work together collaboratively, and we will have times where we have a council president and vice president who are less collaborative. Have you thought about a future where potentially we get competing frameworks, or competing committee structures, because of the language that allows either to bring something forward? Right now, I believe our language just allows the council president to bring forward a committee proposal, or committee membership proposal, and I wasn't sure how this tied into what we already have in statute, and if you had any thoughts that we should get on the record about what would happen if there were competing proposals?
That was a direct question to me. I'm always aware that could happen. I chose the language just as a way of moving it forward. I was probably thinking more logistically, like maybe the council president is gone for a week, and we need to just keep it moving. So I think I was thinking not politically as much as logistically. But if you have a friendly amendment for a language there, what would it be? And/or?
We could do that. We could say elected council leadership, we could say...
What they are.
I know. Well, and I hesitate to say that it should just be the council president, because I don't want it to look like a power consolidation. I just was thinking about, as I read this, the potential for conflict there.
And no suggestion on edit to the language?
Let me think about it.
Want to credit? That's fair. There are more hands up. Councilor, I'm going to go to Dunphy, say that. Okay, Councilor Dunphy.
Thank you. First, to Councilor Canal's amendment, I actually do have a specific concern about removing the city administrator from this, because reflecting on our first year in office, I feel like roughly 80% of the things that we have done have been us reacting. We have really not been a very policy-forward board yet, and I don't really anticipate it kicking up that much more. I think that we will continue to bring in some good ideas, and do some sort of small policy work, and adjust things, and suspend stuff, and, you know, my biggest accomplishments have been taking something that got deleted and putting it back on the record, and then just deleting another section. Like, those are kind of the level we're at right now. And so without the city administrator there, I worry that we are setting ourselves up for a lot of effort to tie our own hands, but still be reactive. And if we don't have the city administration there to help us align those priorities, and they aren't also their priorities in some way, then we are going to continue to react, and then also just have less opportunity for policy conversation. But more broadly, I am still ultimately, I appreciate the work that has gone into this, but I'm still going to be a no on this today. I still feel like this is, at best, a tool that will give us something that is a public communications document, that doesn't actually impact our ability to do the work, and won't necessarily drive better results. I think that this is, I don't, I still don't understand ultimately the benefit, other than to restrict my own ability to pursue policies that I want to pursue. It is my job to find seven votes on any policy, and if I can't convince six of my colleagues to vote for something, then that's, that is my own job failure. So I'm still going to be a no ultimately, and I am also just specifically, because I think we need to craft our, if we're going to have a priorities system, a priority, prioritization is the word I'm looking for, thank you, exercise, it has to be with the broader administration as well.
Okay, that's fair, and I just hope you also took time to read, that it's really clear in the language, that everything that you're worried about could be managed with this resolution.
Sure.
Your feelings are fine to express on the dais, I just want you to know, functionally, you get to do everything that you're talking about, even when this passes.
I see that, which is why I don't ultimately understand why I think we need it.
That's a, that's a fair conversation. I think I've made it really clear that it's just a really common practice for leaders to have such conversations in a transparent manner, free from lobbying and special interest, as we reveal how we're thinking to the public. Yeah. Councilor Clark? What's up? Oh, hello. Councilor Kaya Malane, your hand is up. Thank you, Councilor Clark.
Oh, hi. Thank you, Vice Chair. I believe proof that we do need this resolution, which I will be voting for, is that we have not done any strategic planning up to this point, and it's almost been a full year. So I think this document is important to have this conversation, and express our intention, and really hope that this can get out of the governance committee, because this also shows, illustrates to me how governance issues touch all of us on council, and so I really do hope that all the councillors can have a chance to weigh in on what they would like to see. And I, my hope is that doing this work will help our incoming city administrator, or passing this, or having this document will help our city administrator understand some of our priorities and hopes, and help set us up for a good and effective partnership.
Thank you. I'm going to go ahead, and is Councilor Dunphy, that's, okay, Legacy, Councilor Clark?
Thank you. I have a variety of comments. Just listening to my colleagues here, I'm going to just react to some things, and I think this has been a really good dialogue. First of all, Councilor Dunphy, I think you sell yourself short. I think we really, you and the rest of us really have done more proactive work than reactive work. So yes, there's been a lot of reaction, but I think you're selling yourself and the rest of us short, and I really learn from these conversations between us in committee, and I always reserve the right to be smarter after I hear from my colleagues. So just want to put that out there. Now, Council Prudential, when you brought up the, is this going to be in a public work session, your question, suddenly it dawned on me, I'm sorry to seem a little dense, that this is intended to be public. Is that right? Because I'm just wondering if we shouldn't, if this shouldn't be preceded, ideally, by some sort of retreat, where we are not in public, and we do have frank conversations with each other about our values, not necessarily our priorities, but it just seems like there's a, could be a precursor to this. I'm not going to offer any kind of amendments, or just throwing this out for food for thought. But I had always wanted us to have some sort of a retreat where we could, you know, just be very frank with each other about things. So I'll just throw that out there. And lastly, back to the whole idea of the city manager, I think that we're in the middle of a culture change, and we've had 100 years of a certain kind of government that, you know, got us to this point, we're going to be going through a real culture change, it's going to take years, and I really want us to benefit from someone who is or has professional city management experience, that that is their profession. And we don't have that in this community, we don't have it. I think among consultants we might hire to facilitate something, I want a real man, a city manager who knows what cities are supposed to be doing, how they function, how other city councils do this kind of thing. And I think you're right, Council Ryan, that this is really a normal kind of function on the part of city councils. Usually they're a smaller group, maybe, you know, five to seven, but I, so again, I really want to have the city manager with us on this, and maybe even doing the facilitation themselves. But, but just want to throw those points out. I do hope someday, and I think I may have had this conversation with some of my other colleagues, that it would be nice to have some kind of a retreat at some point, where we could just let our hair down and talk about our values. And we've never done that. We had like a half hour, I think, once at PSU, before we were sworn in, where we talked a little bit about that.
Thank you, Councilor Clark. I didn't hear any new amended language with that, and I think that's also healthy, to put out operational thoughts, and I think we can discuss that in the new year as well. I'll just add one little point to that, that in my experience of collective bodies, is you can do that, you, the members of the media are, of course, invited, just like any executive committee meetings, so there would always be that.
A retreat?
Yeah. Yeah, that was my experience with the school board and such. Anytime a body has a retreat, because it's sunset laws, sunset laws are sunset laws, so you have to have some public access, so I just wanted to add that caveat. Yeah. Council Canal?
Thank you, Chair Ryan. I just wanted to clarify two things. One, I agree with both Councilor Dunphy and Councilor Clark, that the city administrators should be present. I think that they should be free to participate by giving their subject matter expertise, and should be present throughout the process. I also know that facilitation can often be leading, and so having the facilitation be within the council's purview, to me, seems like a more appropriate thing than having the facilitation be the city administrator. And just wanted to clarify, it's not that I don't want them there, quite the opposite. I think that it'll actually enable them to participate more fully with implementation, context, and things like that. The other thing is regarding the bring forward language. I don't know what that means exactly, because, and I, Councilor Dunphy raised this point, he, and I do think you're selling yourself short as well. That noise code ordinance was filed and was considered approved for agenda on April 3rd, but did not get a vote on the city council until June 25th. That's 83 days. So if we put, if bring forward means file, then we could be sitting here from January 31st almost all the way to April 30th before a vote happens, because under current code, the council president has 90 days to put something on the agenda. If bring, and by the way, filing actually occurred earlier than April 3rd, that April 3rd is a date the clerk marked it as approved for agenda, so, for the committee agenda at the time. So I want to just kind of clarify that, and so the reason that I proposed changing it was twofold. One, change bring forward to place on an agenda, so that it's clear that council will start talking about this in public on a date. And then given that that might need a little more time moving that date from January 31st to February 28th, which I think achieves the same purpose, or that Council Ryan was talking about, of having this occur prior to the conversation being focused on the mayor's priorities in the budget, because the city administrators' recommendations came out this year on February 28th. And so by having council actually have that conversation first, that helps address it. Just wanted to clarify that.
I heard everything that you said, and I'm sure that the Council Prudential, in her role as council president, has maybe some additional thoughts. If not, it's okay. But I think what I'm hearing from you is that you want to say bring forward and vote by. Is that what you're saying? You're concerned about it landing on the council agenda. Is that what you're saying? And I assumed this language meant that, but you're saying you need stronger language. What language is that, Councilor Canal?
Thank you for that. That is correct, and my proposal is specifically, I'm going to pull it up here, that the council president or vice president, in coordination with the facilitator, will place on a council agenda, council strategic framework as a resolution by, and it doesn't have to be February 28th, but that's what I proposed, just to give a little extra time to actually get it on there, because I know the council president often has more than just the next week's agenda with some...
So it's in the third to last be it resolved, where the edits are suggested?
Correct.
Okay, hang on, we'll do some cosmetics soon on what we're actually voting on, and before we do that, I'm going to take two more hands, and then I think we're at a place where everyone's stated how they're thinking, how they're voting, and it's time to move on the legislation in terms of the logistics. Council Prudential, then Councilor, wait, I'm late. You're after her.
Thank you, Councilor Ryan. I'm concerned that if we move in the direction that Councilor Canal just laid out, this work bleeds into two months. And what I think you're proposing is that we get down to business and really get this done in the first month. I'm wondering if we could say something like, your language will bring forward council strategic framework as a resolution by January 31st each year, and then add to the end of that clause, and the council president will place it on an agenda as soon as possible? Something that says that we are moving quickly, getting this on the agenda, but that really says the work is closed by this point. We're bringing something forward, we are getting this done within that first month, so that we get down to business, so that we prioritize this, so that we don't put it off, so that if the council president election is difficult, we don't then say, well, we have to wait a few weeks and pull things together, and draw out work that I think we really need to do quickly, so that we can have a clear vision of where we're going, especially if we want this to land before the budget work. So I'm wondering what folks think about something like that.
Keep chewing on it, and then we're going to go to Councilor Kaya Malane.
Thank you, I appreciate this conversation. I'm chewing on what Council President just brought up. I am supportive of the language of clearing, having clarity around the work is closed up by January 31st. I'm a little worried about the language as soon as possible, but I would feel comfortable about saying, and then it's on, specifying it's on the full council agenda, or it's submitted by a certain date. And then the other question, when we were discussing the city, if it should be the city administrator who's facilitating, or if it should be a facilitator chosen by council, I don't feel super strongly in either direction. I like us being able to have some choice, and I also was wondering if we were to go with council operations or a facilitator chosen by council, could we choose the city administrator? Does that, is that still open enough that we could choose? And if so, then I would feel comfortable with that language.
Okay, thank you so much. On this topic, I'll say that I understand the sentiment, why you brought this up, and I don't like words like "as soon as possible," but I do think there's something that could be said that's placed on the next, next council agenda, something that just shows that this is an urgent issue, and it goes from, it goes from what we decided upon in our mutual consensus agreement, or whatever, our agreement, where we could land on a, on a vote, and then we bring that to the next agenda. I think there's concerns, based on experiences last 11 months, that that might not happen, so that's what I'm picking up on. I have to say this, so Craig, here's what, I didn't know that I had to bring up a new one, because this is me asking for forgiveness, that in the last form of city council, when we said we're bringing something back to our office, we're just bringing it back to our office, so there was no reason to amend it. It was just being reworked, and now it's being brought as a fresh resolution. So I apologize if I didn't do something according to the new rules. So will you help me out here on what I'm supposed to do? Because I thought we were just reintroducing it, because it was pulled to my office.
Yeah, so this resolution was continued, and so since you did file the amendment prior to this meeting, I think what you would need to do is move the amendment and vote on each amendment separately, because we have two amendments on the table, yours and Councilor Canal's.
And I'm trying to think this is efficient, I don't want to talk about it a long time, or suddenly it's not efficient at all. So can we play with the friendly amendments that were circulating right now, that Council Canal has brought forward, and then do this all in one?
You are able to make changes to what's been filed from the dais. Councilor Canal's amendment, my understanding was based on the language that you had filed in your amendment.
Yes.
So it is, if you approved Councilor Canal's amendment with your language, or if you made changes to Councilor Canal's amendment, I think that would encompass all of them.
I listen to you right now, and it makes me think we should first pass the new amendment that I brought, now that I know that's what I did, just thought I reworked it. So what we brought, and then we'll address the friendly amendments.
Yes, I think that would be...
Can I move?
Please. Help me.
I would like to move, Ryan, amendment one.
Second.
Second.
All right, let's, let's know that's on the table, and then we need to vote on that first, before we add the friendly amendments to that amendment?
Yes.
That's me, okay. Clerk, take it away. Clerk, take it away.
The question is on Ryan Amendment 1. Clark?
Aye.
Dunphy?
Aye.
Pertogini?
Aye.
Koyamalane?
She said aye, but your sound was off, I think.
Aye.
Thank you for the clarification. And Ryan?
Aye.
The motion passes.
Okay. Now we're moving on to passing basically edits that are called friendly amendments, unless we want to call them not friendly. That doesn't seem right.
Unfriendly.
They don't seem unfriendly to me. Although, let's, you want to go ahead? Who's pitching those?
Counselor, I believe somebody at the dais would need to officially move.
Oh, okay. So would you say you have two?
Yeah. Can I actually, I'm willing to move Canal Amendment 1, but I'd like to split it into two pieces. The first piece is the, be it further resolved, the 1, 2, the fourth, be it further resolved? Can I move that one first?
Yeah, please say it.
I move the Canal Amendment, say 1.1, the first part.
Counselor, I see three parts. Can you read the one that you're moving?
Oh, sure. Okay. I'll read his language. The strategic meetings will be facilitated, oops, by council operations or a facilitator chosen by council. That's the amendment. Turn to a second.
Oh, I said second. Sorry, I guess my sound isn't great. Can you hear me okay? Second?
Yes. Okay, so that's been moved in second, and now we're having a discussion on that.
I have a question. Oh, sorry. I have a question.
Oh, you want to put all on one?
No, I was just thinking that we had some discussion, but Councilor Pertogini has a comment.
Yeah, I thought that, yeah. Council Pertogini?
I'm just wondering what, and I'm sorry to put people on the spot, but whether council operations thinks that they have the expertise to do this or not. I'm sorry, I don't want to give somebody work without actually hearing whether they think that that's work they can take on.
We're having a thoughtful meeting. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Chair Ryan and members of the Governance Committee. For the record, my name's Dana Richardson. I'm your Council Operations Manager. I appreciate being brought into this conversation. I'm not aware that Council Ops currently has this capacity or skill within our existing staff. I think that's all I really have to offer.
Thank you. I'm sorry to put you on the spot, Dana.
I mean, who knows? My people are amazing, but as far as I know at the moment, we don't.
Anything else? Okay. If no, there's no more, oh, there is one more hand up. Hi, Councilor Koyamalane. That's a fresh hand?
Yes. Yeah, and I don't know if this is helpful, but I had, have had conversations with Mr. Craig Cook about the idea of, kind of just in passing, around governance and council operations possibly being able to support us in something like this. So that doesn't mean that that is absolutely, for sure, an option, but that, those are some conversations that we've had, and have looked at some other cities where council operations has supported in similar, has supported similar work. Have also seen other cities where the city administrator does too, but that there's, there was some conversation around this, and so I understand why that's an idea that's here.
Thank you. Any more thoughts before we do the vote on this amendment? Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I would just like to clarify who seconded that amendment?
Oh, it's Koyamalane.
Thank you. And this is on the one paragraph, be it further resolved. The strategic meetings will be facilitated by the city administrator or their designee in coordination with council leadership. Council operations or a facilitator chosen by council would be amended to your amendment.
That's correct. This is the facilitation amendment.
Thank you. On that motion, Clark?
No.
Dunphy?
No.
Pertogini?
No.
Koyamalane?
Aye.
Ryan?
No.
The motion fails with one aye and four no votes.
But there's more. Okay.
Yeah. You're gonna pitch the second one?
No, I just, I believe there were two ayes. Did I miss here our colleagues? No? Okay, I'm sorry.
It's okay.
Just me.
Yeah. You want to pitch the next one? Okay, Councilor Clark, thank you.
Colleagues, I would like to move Canal Amendment 1.2, which is on the second page. The third from the last, be it further resolved, change the council president or vice president in coordination with facilitator will place on a council agenda council strategic framework as a resolution by February the 28th each year. Is there a second?
Point of clarification, does yours also include the changes to the 1, 2, third, be it resolved, section, redlining the word "the" and then adding the words identified by a policy committee leadership?
Oh, no. I just went right to the last one.
Okay.
Just the last one. I forgot the very, very first "the," sorry.
I think the breakdown is very helpful. So we're focused on one, be it resolved.
Well, I'll second that one. If we were talking about just the final, be it resolved with regard to February 28th, I second that.
Okay. So we have a, we have the amendment motion and seconded. Any more discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Could you please clarify again who seconded that?
Ew.
Thank you. And would someone be so kind as to read again the motion language?
Sure. Okay. The motion is to change the language and the third of the last, be it further resolved, to the council president or vice president in coordination with the facilitator will place on a council agenda council strategic framework as a resolution by February the 28th each year.
Thank you. On that motion, Clark?
Aye.
Dunphy?
Aye.
Pertogini?
No.
Koyamalane?
Aye.
Ryan?
Aye.
With four ayes and one no vote, the motion is approved.
Okay. Have we, there's one more, right?
Teeny one.
Do you want to take it on again, Councilor Clark?
I will move one more Canal amendment. It's probably point zero one. It was the third, therefore be it resolved. It's the second, be it further resolved, to remove the "the." Is that the, and then, is this added? Is that yours?
I don't know why they're two different colors, but there's a blue section and a red section.
Is the blue part of your amendment?
Blue is additional text being added.
Okay, sorry. Let's back up.
We needed that.
Okay, the motion is to make the change, to take out the "the." So the third, be it resolved, is council policy committees may be suspended during this timeframe to provide the time and capacity for full council to focus on strategic priority setting, with special consideration for emergent issues identified by policy committee leadership, city operational obligations, and other policies which may be addressed at full council, and bypass policy committees until the strategic priority framework is adopted or until January the 31st.
Second.
Okay, it's been motion with a second discussion?
Question, we just changed this reference, we changed the previous ref, or the next reference of January 31st? Do we also have to change this to be February 28th, or can they operate on different timelines?
Councilor Canal says no.
No, the first, where it says January 31st here is, it says until the strategic policy framework is adopted or, but I think it has to do with when the committees would be suspended in Councilor Ryan's original text, and I think that still holds if amended.
Got it.
As opposed to when the vote on the final outcome would be.
Yeah. There's a further clarification then?
Go ahead, Counselor.
Yeah.
Thank you. I, I guess I want to hear from Councilor Canal about why he wants to make this amendment, that something has to be identified by a policy committee leadership. I don't, I don't understand why that's necessary.
Yeah, it's to broaden out who can make that decision. It's not to restrict it, quite the opposite. Right now, whether or not an additional committee, once a, once the normal committee schedule is adjusted, right now, only the council president can give you more time. And I think it's really important that we have the committee leadership be able to identify that there's something pressing, and get that additional time. Because the, otherwise, it's a single counselor who may not be on those committees, who's making that in. So that this allows for more input into that process.
It's interesting, because it's not the way I read it, but I'm happy to hear your intent.
And I'm open to workshopping the language, if that helps to get to that intent. But as I've mentioned in a few other places, we have the Public Safety Committee have been asking for more time. We even approved a budget that allowed for two evening meetings a month, and then a council, a weekly council meeting ordinance that allowed for one evening full council meeting a month, with the intention that the other slot budgeted for would be for committee meetings. Can't get it. So I think trying to ensure that the chair, vice chair, co-chairs, whatever the council policy committee leadership is, can identify that there's a dire need to have that meeting is really valuable.
And all you're saying is, with special consideration?
Yeah.
Special consideration for emergent issues.
And those emergent issues could be identified by the...
So you're really just calling it out? It's, yeah.
That's the intention.
Okay. Councilor Pertogini?
I also have a question about intent here. The way that I originally read this, but now I'm questioning myself, is that exceptions could be made if a policy committee chair or co-chairs decide they need a committee, if there are city operational obligations that would necessitate a committee meeting, or other policies may come up which could be addressed at full council instead of committee. But I've second guessed myself now, and want to make sure that that is the intent, because it could also be read to say that if a policy committee chair or co-chairs thought an issue was emergent, it could be addressed by full council instead of a committee. So which is your intent? I want to make sure we're voting on what I think we are.
That's a great question. The former is the intention, the way you originally thought it. And I think that's why, for two reasons. One is that's why it's earlier in the clause, as opposed to where the words are placed, and the commas make it a little confusing, but, and then the other piece of it is that the council president has authority over the full council agenda as in code, and this could supersede that anyway.
So what we're voting on in terms of the intent, unless one of my colleagues wants to state a different intent, is that policy committees may be suspended, but work can still continue in three ways. A policy committee could take up an issue that a chair or co-chairs identified as emergent. A policy committee could take up city operational obligations, or other large issues could be addressed at full council. Okay. Thank you for that clarification.
Any other questions? I'm a little bit torn on this one, because I hope that you all took some time to see the word "may." So I think we all know that you can continue to work on whatever issues you need to work on in your committees. And so the intent here is a language change to make sure that it includes the leaders of policy committees. And so really, it's in the third line that you want to see that added. Is that the only edit?
There's a "the" that I didn't think was necessary.
Of course there is. I say that tongue in cheek to my very intelligent word smithing colleague. So I'm good with that. Any other questions? And thank you for further clarifying that. Okay, Clerk, I think we're ready for the vote.
Clark?
Aye.
Dunphy?
Aye.
Pertogini?
Aye.
Koyamalane?
Aye.
Ryan?
Aye. Okay. So the, this has been amended, and how? And so now do we vote on it one last time? Okay. All right, Clerk, let's vote on the big enchilada, so we can move on to the next item.
You need to move in second.
I move that we...
Oh, I thought we just did all that.
Pass the now amended resolution with a due pass rec, or that we, we send the now amended resolution with a due pass recommendation to the full council.
Second.
Right. It's, now it's been moved and seconded. Council, please call the...
Clark?
Aye.
Dunphy?
No.
Pertogini?
Aye.
Koyamalane?
Aye.
Ryan?
Aye.
The resolution as amended is approved with four ayes and one no vote.
Thank you. And now if you could please read the next item.
Item 5, 2025-471, add appointed boards, commissions, and committees code, adding Code Chapter 3.40.
Thank you, Wendy. I want to recognize the months of dedicated work of Julia Meyer, I see Ocean out there. Thank you, Ocean, and Amanda Garcia Snell. This is a team that has drafted the Advisory Board Commissions and Committee Reports in City Code for today's discussion. Colleagues, today we are considering an ordinance to add appointed boards, commissions, and committee code. This is part of the Advisory Body's Enhancement Project, a project to ensure the city's boards, commissions, and committees align with our new form of government, and that we have standard citywide practices. As a reminder, this fall, we heard a couple of updates on the project. Since then, the project has progressed, publishing its final report at the end of November. I am pleased to co-introduce this item with Chair Koyamalane and Mayor Wilson. As we consider the code, I want to remind my colleagues of a couple things. First, the code is only the council's first step in adopting new citywide policies and practices. In addition to the code, we will need to adopt rules and procedures on the relationship of the council to boards, commissions, and committees, and on appointments and confirmations. A draft resolution of the council procedures has been prepared by the project team. Bringing this resolution to the Governance Committee is a priority in the new year. Second, there has been a lot of discussion about syncing up the requirements and processes for the council and mayor's created advisory bodies. However, the legislative branch or executive branch do not have the powers to legislate this action for the other. Adoption of citywide practices also requires executive action by the mayor, city administrator, and chief engagement officer. Last week, the mayor expressed, expressed his intent to comply with the same requirements for mayor-created boards, commissions, and committees that the council sets for council-created bodies. And the chief engagement officer is prepared to release administrative rules for comment as soon as the council approves the code before us today. We have Sarah Ames from the city's Attorney's Office present in the event there are questions about this. Thank you so much, Sarah, for being here this afternoon, although it's winter solstice, so it looks like we're well into the night. Julia and Amanda will discuss the next steps to get this to the finish line, so I won't go into all that. But we are looking to schedule the code revisions at a city council meeting with a tentative date of January 14th. I'll now hand it over to our presenters, Amanda Garcia Snell, the city's Chief Engagement Officer, and Julia Meyer, Project Manager for the Advisory Bodies Enhancement Project. Welcome. Thank you for being here.
Thanks, Councilor Ryan and Councilors. Good afternoon. I'm Amanda Garcia Snell, Chief Engagement Officer, for the record. Thank you for having us back to the Governance Committee for this final phase of the Advisory Bodies. Bodies Enhancement Project. As you may recall, we released the final report a couple of weeks ago and are hoping to use this time today to talk through the draft ordinance and code that will help us move forward, move toward implementation. Depending on the outcome of this presentation, we anticipate being able to come to full council in the new year. And with more, at that time, we'll bring more detail, as you mentioned, of the administrative rules that will accompany the council direction outlined in the ordinance and code. Before I kick it over to Julia to dive in, I want to again extend my appreciation to you all, to, for your leadership on this effort, and to my colleagues Julia and Ocean, as mentioned in Sarah, on the work on this effort, as well as other staff, community members, and your fellow counselors who have supported this project. I also just want to note that Julia's temporary position is coming to a close at the end of this month, and I just really express my deep gratitude for the work that she's accomplished in this space. And with that, I'll hand it over to Julia.
Thank you. It's really good to be here again. Julia Meyer, she/her pronouns, Project Manager for the Advisory Bodies Enhancement Project. Vice Chair Ryan, I know we're running a little bit late. I had a 15-minute presentation. Do you prefer something more succinct?
Thank you.
Okay.
Leadership, yeah. Brevity is leadership skill. Please.
Yeah, great. So, yeah, we are here today to present the first step in adopting citywide policies and practices related to appointed boards, commissions, and committees, or what I'm probably going to refer to sometimes as ABCs. And that's an ordinance adding city code provisions. Next slide, please. I'm going to quickly go through background and context, and then I'll really just focus on walking you through the draft code, talk about the actions that we are requesting from the Governance Committee, and very briefly touch on next steps. Next slide, please. I've spent a couple of times before you going over this. I won't belabor it. I might just skip to, you know, this year where Amanda came to this committee in late spring, presented an outline of this project, and we've really been at it pretty consistently for the last eight months or so. Next slide, please. There's a lot of inputs that have gone into this project over the last eight months. I will again kind of appreciate, as Amanda did, this committee for really keeping the momentum of this work going. It's work that historically has stalled out sometimes at the city, and so I really think it's the leadership of this committee that enables us to be here with the draft code today, as well as an internal work group we had that had representation from all the service areas, as well as Counselor Canall, who was there as a representative of the full council. That was really helpful to get us to a whole set of new citywide recommended policies and practices. And you can find them all in our final report, which is attached to the ordinance as Exhibit A. Next slide, please. So briefly, I do think there's some important notes on how to understand what's before you today, and Counselor Ryan addressed some of these. The first is that this project is part of a larger effort to rethink how the city engages with community. ABCs are a crucial component, but just one of many ways. And so I would invite you to kind of situate this within a larger portfolio of business that needs to happen at the city, and to think of ABC members current and past as a resource in that larger work. Second, this project is really a internal reorganization effort that's aimed at standardizing practices and increasing operational efficiency. So a lot of the proposed practices are very behind-the-scenes type of work. And it's hoping that by getting kind of the city's house in order, we help the members of ABCs contribute to the missions of the ABCs more effectively. And the third is what Counselor Ryan, I think, well articulated about, you know, ABCs are a really interesting part of our new form of government because both council and the mayor have independent charter authority around appointed boards, commissions, and committees. And so as Counselor Ryan mentioned, adoption of these policies and practices is going to be this code. Council procedures that council can adopt around its own relationship to ABCs, as well as administrative rules and other executive guidance. And I really appreciate that what's before you today is being co-introduced by the chair and vice chair of this committee, as well as the mayor's office. So just to keep in mind as we go through the code, you're not going to see all of the proposed practices reflected in the code, right? There will be additional practices in council procedures and additional practices in the administrative rules. Next slide, please. So let's get into the code. The proposal is to add Portland City Code Chapter 3.40 on appointed boards, commissions, and committees. This slide just articulates the sections, purpose of the chapter, definitions, classification, application, the creation sunset, and periodic review of ABCs and member conduct. The overall purpose of the chapter is to establish policies for the city's ABCs. Next slide, please. There's a very brief definition section. It only has two definitions, enabling legislation and creating authority. Enabling legislation just refers to the charter provision, ballot measure act, city ordinance or code provision that establishes the ABC, its duties and authority. And creating authority refers to the council or the mayor. For the reasons we've talked about before is that the charter gives authority to establish boards and commissions to both the council and the mayor. Next slide, please. So we've talked about this a couple of, of past Governance Committee meetings. The Chapter 3.40030 establishes a classification system for ABCs at the city. There are two big classes, each with subclasses. The first class is ABCs the city does not have sole authority to create, alter, or dissolve. Those include independent charter bodies, ballot measure oversight bodies, bodies required by law, and intergovernmental bodies. And the second class is ABCs the city has sole authority to create, alter, or dissolve, which really just have two subclasses, those that are ongoing and those that are limited, limited in the sense that they end at a specific period of time or upon the happening of a specific event. What is not included in ABCs are bodies comprised solely of city employees, informal community sounding boards or consultations, and inter-agency bodies where the city has only elected representation. Next slide, please. So this is Section 3.40.040, application of the chapter. So this code chapter applies to independent charter bodies, ballot measure oversight bodies, bodies required by law, bodies created by the council, whatever their classification, ongoing advisory bodies, and limited advisory bodies that are subject to the Oregon Public Meetings Law. So basically, all of the subclasses I just listed, except intergovernmental agreement bodies. And then Section B is important and just establishes that the city administrator may establish administrative rules for any ABC covered by this chapter. That's a reference, again, to the executive action that needs to happen to get us to citywide practices for ABCs. Next slide, please. So Chapter Section 3.40.050 talks about ABC creation, sunset, and periodic review. I'm just going to briefly go over each one because I think they're all doing important things here. So this is about creation. It again restates the charter authority that both council and the mayor have the authority to create, alter, abolish ABCs. It does say that the council will create new ABCs through ordinance, with the exception that council may create limited advisory bodies through resolution. Next, it says that the mayor or a counselor may propose to counsel the creation of an ABC, and that person is then referred to as an ABC sponsor, and that the ABC may be created only after the sponsor has analyzed and reported on a set of things. The proposed primary purpose, mission, functions, and responsibilities of the new ABC, the number of seats, qualifications for the seats, and the appointing authority for each seat, any possible duplication of efforts or conflicts with existing advisory bodies, and the anticipated financial staffing and operational impacts upon city resources, and whether the ABC will have dedicated resources. This section also states that each ABC only has the functions, powers, and duties and responsibilities specifically delegated to it by the creating authority through enabling legislation or resolution, if by council, or through mayoral action. And the council has the authority to modify the functions, powers, duties, and responsibilities by a majority vote. So too does the mayor have the authority to modify the functions, powers, duties, and responsibilities of an ABC created through mayoral action. Next slide, please. So this is the same chapter section, but this is about sunset. We've talked about this the last couple of times we've been here as well. The proposed code language states that an ABC will sunset and automatically dissolve after four years of operation unless the creating authority, so the mayor or council, extends the ABC's term, or the ABC's enabling legislation or resolution, or the mayoral action specifies a different sunset. Next slide, please. The final piece of this section provides for what we call periodic review, and it would require that the city administrator report to council periodically about the status of all of the city's ABCs. And the report will assess whether existing ABCs are inactive or outdated, might be combined with other ABCs with similar powers, duties, or functions, fulfill an ongoing purpose, or could be time limited with a sunset applied, and align with citywide ABC standards and practices. Next slide, please. And the final piece, 3.40.060, is on ABC member conduct, stating that members of ABCs are public officials, subject to rules of conduct established by the Bureau of Human Resources, including ethical standards and rules related to workplace harassment, discrimination, and retaliation. Next slide, please. So what we're here to ask you for today is that the Governance Committee recommend this ordinance to the full council. The ordinance directs the addition of Portland City Code Chapter 3.40 on appointed boards, commissions, and committees, as shown as Exhibit B to the ordinance. And the city administrator will ensure that the council receives a written implementation report within six months, and council and the mayor receive annual reports on the ABC program. Next slide, please. This is our last slide. It's just where we go today, after today. So again, an ordinance adopting code provisions is a very important first step, and only a first step in the adoption of citywide policies and practices. As Counselor Ryan mentioned, we'll also wanting, want to come back on council rules of procedure, and then there will be administrative rules as well. We hope that all three of those things can be adopted as early as the beginning of 2026. One thing on this slide I do want to note is this reconciling and cleanup of existing code. As this project was developing recommendations for citywide policies and practices, the service areas and offices were conducting an assessment of the city's existing ABCs. That review did result in a set of proposed recommended changes to the city's advisory bodies. They're in the final report towards the end of that document. They are drafts only, those recommended changes, and I think the city, you know, is seeking feedback on those proposed changes. But once the details of those get hammered out, there's a public process where folks can weigh in about those proposed recommendations, then I imagine a code cleanup package would be back before council for your consideration about how you want to implement those. And I, for the sake of time, I'll stop there and just really appreciate the time. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Julia and Amanda. I'm open to questions right now. Counselor Dumphy?
Thank you. Would this be a better time? I have, I have a number of questions, but should we do, does there public testimony first, or should we do?
I don't, I don't, I was told we don't have any. Do we have any?
We have two individuals signed up to testify.
Oh, sorry about that.
I would rather wait.
Yeah, let's, let's listen to the testimony first.
Mr. Have Terry Harris?
And thank you. You'll be back at the dial soon. Yeah. Welcome, Terry. Sorry about that.
Hi, Terry Harris for the record, and thanks for, for doing this. I, I will say, first of all, generally, this is a massive effort. I appreciate the work that's gone into this, and this report and the code will be very useful moving forward. The classes, classifications make sense. It's bringing order to chaos, and all of this will be really helpful. In there, just a couple of quick things, and then I have a bunch of code nitpicks that I'll try and walk through really quickly. But first, disappointed in the report not being more explicit about the budget advisory committees that went away, were supposed to come back, and are still not yet coming back, and this report doesn't sort of move that ball along. So I, that's just something to keep on your, on your radar. Multnomah County did a complete overhaul of their budget advisory committees. They're so much better now. I know you guys can do it, too. Okay, so the code, the code is necessary, and it's good to be in its own chapter. It's good to acknowledge that it's nowhere near complete. There's going to be a bunch of other stuff that happens. I made some edits. They're in the written testimony that you should be able to see, and I believe I sent them to your offices over the weekend. Some of them are necessary, I think, and some of them are just better practices that might make things easier in the future. But let me walk through them. In the definitions section, I added the definitions of ABCs in the definitions section. Okay? And I moved it from the classification section. I think that'll, that'll be helpful. I think there's a recognition that the Charter, Section 2.103, controls all of this, and that Charter section can probably speak for itself. So I deleted a bunch of stuff that talks about that, and I think it's clear that I deleted it. Let me skip to rulemaking. I, I moved the rulemaking by the city administrator to a separate section because I think that's really important, especially because of a lot of what happens next is rulemaking. I think that section on rulemaking needs a scope. What rule, what is that rulemaking going to be for? It's going to be for standardization. It's going to be for membership. It's going to be that sort of thing. I think it needs to be scoped and not just wide open that that's the city administrator can do. I think in creation, it's not a sponsor responsibility, it's a responsibility of the council findings and the resolution. I think that is, it just kind of has to be that way. And so I made some edits along those lines, and that's, and that's basically it. Any questions? I can try and answer them.
Thank you so much.
I think, you know.
And the next person to testify?
Next, we have Counselor Canall.
Good afternoon, once again. For the record, Sumir Canall, District Two City Councilor. I want to outline the strengths today of the policy package, where it could have gone further, and the amendment that I also prefilled, which is down at the bottom of the list. Community deserves to have a voice in government and to see their priorities reflected in the decisions we make. Advisory boards and commissions help make that happen. They bring residents into the work of government, help us explore complex issues, and ensure community experience and expertise directly shape policy. Strengthening these pathways strengthens our democracy, and that's why this policy and this entire project matters. I've spent the past several months participating in the development of the package before you today. As someone who previously oversaw several city advisory bodies while working at the Public Safety Surface Area, I know firsthand how meaningful and impactful these groups can be when they're supported and structured well. First, the strengths. This report takes an important step by recommending periodic reviews of our large lists of boards and commissions. Over the years, the cities may create many advisory groups, some still extant, others inactive. Regular review will help us identify when a body has completed its purpose, or when it should shift from ABC status to a community consultation. That clarity will reduce duplication, help us focus our dollars and resources where they're most needed. It also ensures there's some oversight on the mayor's office, who's created the overwhelming majority of advisory bodies. majority of advisory bodies, volunteer bodies. The report also employs our Human Resources Bureau to support members' behavioral expectations. We must maintain standards of respectful behavior, including working against discrimination, harassment, retaliation, and BHR support is critical to ensuring that. I also want to highlight the important recommendations of supporting the staff who manage these bodies. They need guidance on the law, technology support, agenda collaboration, and report development. And one of the most important is standardizing the number of seats on each body because fixed seat numbers reduce bias and ensure fairness and predictability in recruitment and filling vacancies. There are also areas where this policy could go further. During the engagement process of this project, members and staff who were surveyed expressed wanting more access to city leadership and council. I'm strongly supportive of an annual convening and recognition event to ensure transparency, coordination, and appreciation. This relates to Page 46 of the report. This could also be a place where advisory bodies can present their work, share strategic priorities, and connect directly with elected officials and other city leaders. Other local governments do this as well. Finally, I want to address my ongoing concern regarding council appointment procedures. Through this process, we consistently heard that members want more visibility and acknowledgement from council. Committee-level engagement should be the minimum, but we must expand transparency at the full council as well. And that brings me to the amendment. I'm proposing that the administration present, this is just to the ordinance, not the report, present an initial implementation plan by the end of February 2026, so council can provide directions on which parts to prioritize. With more than 60 pages of strong ideas here, one additional touch point ensures alignment on priorities and clarity on next steps. I also added a small change to add the reports back to council to include continual improvement, not just implementation. These two sections go hand in hand, and I checked with Julia Meyer, our staff leading this process, who agreed it would make it consistent to put the two together. Thank you for your time. I'm happy to answer follow-up questions.
We will take those, we'll have questions right now, but I need to do a time check. So it's 4:17. I've been doing some logistical thoughts up here about how to move this forward. This is an ordinance. We can do ordinances in one reading at a committee meeting. We can also have a first reading and then bring it back next week. If that happens, we would have to do, we would bring it to the council with a full emergency, so we could vote on this, hopefully before the end of the year. And some of that is because staffer Julia Meyer's been driving this from the beginning, and having her engaged would be really helpful. So I just wanted to put that all out there. That all said, Councilor Dunphy?
Thank you. I also want to start by giving Amanda and Julia a lot of kudos. I know that so much of this work is over a decade old. I was in City Hall last time when Commissioner Nick Fish first tried to take a stab at this and wasn't able to get that before his, he unfortunately passed away from cancer. And so I appreciate the amount of incredible work that has gone into this. That said, I have some serious concerns about voting on this either today as an emergency or next week even. I think that I have some specific concerns. I share almost everything that Terry has raised as an amendment. I would be very interested in trying to see us move in that direction. I recognize also, as you were saying, that there is some iterative work that needs to happen to this section of code, that code will inform rules, which will then inform a code cleanup project, but that inherently makes me feel a little squeamish. And then I also have some, I will also be proposing Councilor Canal's amendment that he has prefilled. I don't know if we'll do that today or if we'll do that somewhere else, but I have some specific questions that I was hoping staff could come up and answer. And again, some of these may be ones that we have to clarify later, but there are ones that are immediately, at the very least, my staff are saying, please go ask these questions because we need answers. Starting, the Charter gives, as you said, Charter gives council authority to create boards and commissions, and gives the mayor authority to create advisory bodies, but it seems like this section of code, in a lot of ways, addresses both of them with the same breadth. How does this ordinance distinguish between those two categories? And where is the legal boundary between those actually defined in code?
Thanks for the question, Counselor. Is it okay? Do you want me to start? So let me start, and then obviously Amanda's here, and Sarah Ames from the city attorney's office is here, if you prefer a legal response. So I think your reading is accurate. I think that this code addresses ABCs created by both branches in many parts. So something like, let's take the periodic review section that I think is really important in this code. Council has the ability to direct the city administrator to report to council on things. So that periodic review is you directing the city administrator to report back to council on all existing ABCs, those created by the mayor and those created by council, for example, right? Or you take a section like sunset, right? This idea that unless otherwise stated, ABCs will sunset after four years. That can apply to both mayor-created and council-created bodies because it doesn't take any authority from the mayor. The mayor still has the authority to come back and say, actually, I'd like to extend this body, right? Just as council has the authority to come back and extend council-created bodies. So the area where you're going to see the distinction is 340.005A4. That's really where the distinction lies. And for folks not following that list of numbers and letters, it's the mayor or a council may propose the creation of an ABC after the following things are analyzed and reported on. So that is the only section that's saying, if council creates a body, whether it is proposed by the mayor or council, council won't create it until either the mayor, if the mayor is proposing it to council, or the counselor, if a counselor is proposing it to council, is going to analyze the following four things. That's the only place where you're going to see the distinction of the authorities. The mayor, as Councilor Ryan mentioned, intends to hold the mayor's office to the same standards that council creates for itself in this creation provision. But that is where I think the advice from the city attorney's office is that council could not have that same provision applied to mayor-created bodies through code.
Okay. And Councilor Canal, you had also some feedback on some of that?
Yeah, I'm speaking here not as a proposer of the amendment, but as council's designated to the work group. And in talking to the two colleagues to my right here, the original version of this really didn't have many limitations at all or any definition for the mayor in their creation, that office's creation. I think if you look at most city code, it is to clarify, define, empower, or restrict the executive branch and the administration broadly. I think that's a fair read of it. So by adding this applicability to both, it actually strengthened it, in my view. I'll also note that the enabling legislation is probably where the distinction between advisory and non-advisory would be made clear for each individual body, because the bodies that have specific decision-making authority are different from each other in what that authority is, the scope of it, the type of it, et cetera. And so it's the specific enabling legislation that might need, that's probably where the thing you're asking about would actually be defined.
That makes sense, but certainly feels scary to me, in that the code is supposed to be the backbone, in many ways, of what all of our proposals are, you know, guided by the charter, but that code language is our daily reader. And if we are reliant on forms being filled out properly with a certain robustness for the next 100 years, I worry that that is leaving us short and leaves us to vulnerabilities. I also have some questions, I guess more specifically, I mean, I have a number of questions, but responding directly. The four-year term, first of all, is that defined in code? Or will it be defined, I didn't see it in there. Will it be defined as being tied to the mayor's term, or is it tied to the off-year, four-year creation? Or is it going to be independent of either of them, just sort of based off of like when they get created? It's just a four-year license moving forward?
That's correct, Counselor.
Okay. And is that to the dissolution of the board or the membership of the board? Like, I don't know. Imagine some major emergency happens, and suddenly the Planning and Sustainability Commission goes away? Like, is it that we have to re-stand this, or that those terms just all expire?
The board itself.
Okay, okay. Colleagues, I'm trying to be as mindful of time as I can, and I apologize for this. In Section 340.030B, it states specifically that the city has sole authority to create, alter, or dissolve certain ABCs, but it doesn't define who the city is in that context, whether that is the council, the mayor, the city administrator, or some combination. Who is that intended to be legally exercising that authority?
It is all or both. It could be either. And this is to Mr. Harris's amendment, too. That's the one part, I support a lot of it, by the way, but there's a lot in there. This is the one place where I think it's not exactly clear the way that it's amended. I think it's better to say the city. It's to distinguish the city from another entity, meaning if we have a committee that's joint with the county. That's the, I think, the distinction there. And if you look at, the C gives more clarity to that, the next section down, on what is not in the scope of this project.
Okay. That makes, okay. Similar section, or the same section, similar-ish question. The 3.40.030 classifies as advisory bodies, even though the council has charter authority over non-advisory bodies and decision-making boards and commissions. So are council's decision-making bodies excluded from this framework? Or is it intended to be included of council?
It's intended to be inclusive.
Okay.
And just to clarify, that we're using advisory, but it's, ABCs is just a general term, and I think the elegant solution that was found here was to say appointed is the A.
Oh, okay.
So if you look at just the chapter title, appointed.
Gotcha.
Time check.
Thank you, yeah. Very briefly, with regard to the BHR component of this, giving the Human Resources Department authority to treat our advisory members with the same sort of protections, I know that that has specifically been a thing that we've heard in the past, where volunteers on boards have had bad experiences, and HR has said they're unable to sort of help with anything. But does this code, section of code envision these folks equivalent to a city employee in terms of their protections, or is it more equivalent to a public official? Meaning, could a board member have egregious behavior and be dismissed by BHR because of this violation? Or, you know, I can't get fired by BHR, right? But there are other tools. How does that envision that authority?
Yeah, I'll answer, and then if the city attorney's office wants to say something in a different way than I'm about to. It does not envision that ABC members are city employees, nor does it envision that ABC members are elected officials. It does envision that ABC members are public officials. And public officials and elected officials are not synonymous.
If I can add, having led, there was a sub-work group in the last iteration of this that I did on my former job, BHR doesn't actually fire folks. They recommend to the manager that that person be fired or whatever other disciplinary action. I think that would be a similar structure here, and each appointing authority might get that recommendation from BHR after an investigation to allegations of conduct or misconduct.
Okay, great. My very last question is just, what would legally prevent this ordinance from requiring the city administrator to provide counsel with a timely, detailed report within 30 days of any new executive-created advisory body? Is there anything that would prevent us from being able to have something like that?
It's my understanding council has the authority to direct the city administrator to report to it on things. So I think that is in council's authority.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Dunphy. So we are a minute away from ending the meeting. I'll give us like 10-minute grace, the most. I think this is where this is going. We are going to do this as a first reading today, and we'll be taking this back at the top of the agenda next week. And we will have an opportunity, if passed, to put onto the council agenda, because our council president is very adaptable. And we would do that at the final council meeting of the year next week. Is that good? We do need to discuss if we're going to have this amendment read into the record as a part of this. That's, I think, the issue. We don't have to vote on the amendment today, but we will decide whether it's motioned and seconded into the public record. Thanks for listening to all that. Let's go to the next question. Councilor Clark?
Oh, I'm sorry. There's not much time. I would just say that I really appreciate the work. It's very complex. Obviously, there's lots more questions. I'm clearly not ready to vote on this today. I thought I heard comments about it needs more standardization, and I haven't had a chance to go through all of Terry's proposals yet, but I do feel that he's right on on the context on the budget and budget advisory committees, so I want to spend some more time with that. So, thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Clark. Councilor Protogony?
Really appreciate the work that's been done here. There are some just flags in terms of what the record shows and what our intent is that I want to make sure to make next week. I'll save our time today. I would love to have my colleagues, councilors Clark and Dunphy, look through the edits from Terry Harris, the amendment from Councilor Canal, and figure out if there's an amendment that we want to bring forward next week. I'm very open to some of the things that I've heard about, and I'll leave it at that for today.
Thank you. Councilor Clark, is that new? I'd like to see.
No.
Okay. Councilor Canal, go ahead.
Very, very brief. Please also read Yume Delegato's written testimony, and it'll help explain, in part, it has more than just this, why that second part of the amendment I proposed is so important to narrow the scope and be very specific about what's being brought back by the city administrator. It also has a lot of other value.
Thank you. Did you have your hand up?
I didn't want it up. I didn't.
But I would.
I believe you. Would it be better to, I have every intention of moving the Canal 1 amendment towards this. I could do that right now, or we could do it next week, whichever.
I think having it into the public record, if it's moved and seconded, is better for transparency's sake.
There. So I would like to move Canal 1, which specifically reads, "Now therefore, the council directs," it adds a new subsection B that says, "The city administrator will report back to the city council in a work session by February 28, 2026, to discuss and to receive feedback on implementation priorities and the proposed implementation plan." New Section C has some additional new language, that says, "City administrator will ensure that the council receives a written implementation report within six months," adding the language "of the passage of this ordinance that includes but will not be limited to progress on elements in Exhibit A, Final Project Report, Implementation," adding the words "and continuous improvement sections," and then updates lettering to "previous Section C, now be Section D." So I would like to move that.
And we have a second? And we have a second? Okay, it's been moved and seconded. So colleagues, we have some legislation now that has an amendment, and we are going to go ahead and conclude this first reading and bring this up at next week's governance meeting. Yes? As a second reading that we'll be voting on. And I think that's it. Any other questions for the good of the order? Thank you, Sarah Ames, for being here today, and we'll see you again next Monday, it looks like. And I really encourage my colleagues between now and then to reach out to our colleagues that are in front of us and our counselor, legal advisor, Sarah Ames, as well. And with that, I think we're good. Anything else on the agenda over there, clerks? No? All right. This concludes our Governance Committee meeting. Have a wonderful evening. It's.